Exhibit H was highlighted on Facebook.
He wants to listen on Facebook, he wants to sign or didn't sign?
It took a long time.
They want to have a domain for highlighted and something like that. But they got Nancy, they can listen on there since she already signed it, but they got it. They need some building there, so they're not, I kind of like that doing a tammy shitters. They're not even being truthful about it. It's a partial list.
That's interesting, he wasn't highlighted or he was highlighted, so people think that I signed and I did not.
No, he wasn't.
Without spraying, or just cleaning it up for the year?
Well, I'm thinking about a snow shot around so long.
You've been on that thing in the summer.
They call it, you'll get into the mania, help us throw some around, that's all. So I feel this is, it still feels rather, looks like we should go home. And then they go, oh, we'll post that. Oh, and then he started up the ethanol plants, and he sold them to the most of them. Guys, got any more money at Jalen? Yeah. Yeah, part two, I don't know how many of yours have been, they think it builds, you know, many states.
Yeah.
They've been shannoning. It's a second, big, which time? You know, right winger.
Is he swinging them? He called me yesterday and then I called him, didn't I?
It's extra. Yeah. And of course you had to sign your name if that isn't.
Sound like it's an experience, it's not a service, it's a surprise.
Pretty, what the hell is?
Think about this, not something I want to bring up, that, you know, what's the setback on my, make you repeat? So, what's your setback on, I want to say sixteen, probably, I think it's eighteen, something like that.
Every three years.
Eighty fifty. Yeah, they want, but we got a thousand feet on a dwelling in this ordinance, and that's all.
First, keep building it.
Or has that's by the line, they can travel to thirteen hundred feet, that'll be a full dose in four minutes. I think that you're asking a wire for us.
I told you, it's great what you want, I was also, you know, I really do.
Yeah, they're, they're not very far.
You know, obviously, in a modest study, they said that, you know, wind, humidity, all play a factor.
Yeah, humidity, I believe, something just down.
Don't go to the low lying areas.
Yeah.
One of the things you gotta think about, the low lying area, if you're in Charlotte or home, your basement's.
It's a lot of, it's gonna attract the salt and moisture.
You have an empty basement, that you're not gonna see it all. Right? If you're within a thousand feet of that thing, unless in the little minutes, it's in your basement, it'll be a full dose.
Almost ten, place.
Okay, here the kids are sleeping down there, yeah, they stay fancy.
You're going rain.
I mean, I really don't think there's any setbacks, we're confined, so you know, we're.
I hate to bet you don't.
That's all okay, yeah.
And the, that's why I'm like, that's my, that's my, that's my.
Yeah, I really, I have to pass the paper.
I don't, well, Jerry, I was, I was, well, I figured you had to commit it. I didn't, yeah, I just say it on six.
I'm gonna bring up.
Okay, it's not like, it's not like, it's not like, you all, push it through, it's time, eight times to one. Ten minutes to be, I give it.
Yeah, two o'clock in the morning, okay.
Let's stand to do the federal allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All meeting to order.
Um, Nick Ram just came into my office, she told me that Cassous County was on the radio this morning. Apparently Rob Sand is acknowledging some counties in Iowa that are the most efficient, and Cassous County is one of them.
I heard Cassous came this morning, but I didn't catch what it was for.
So just wanted to let you know.
More good.
Must be the auditor and the engineer.
I guess, I'll take credit.
What's that?
We were on the radio this morning, it's one of the most efficient counties in Iowa.
Well, congratulations to you guys.
One of the ones.
The most efficient county. Well, I think we're the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, any other public discussion? I assume you're all here for CO2 pipeline? Anybody not here for the CO2 pipeline? With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated August twenty-third? A motion by Casey, second by Stackers, any discussions? Hearing not, all those in favor, please say aye. I oppose. Motion carried. This guy's got assigned today. I got another one?
Oh, you already signed ours.
Yeah. We got a whole bunch of signatures, thank you.
Oh, but you know, it's all set up then.
So, yeah.
Well, is this for the minutes, or?
That's for the resolution.
It's for the resolution. Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, who's, are you ready?
Yeah.
Oh, next we have discussion approval of segregation of duties policy, it's in your folder. Have any comments on it? Pretty hard to have segregation of duties when we don't have that many employees, I don't know why we have to sign cheap paper, but we will.
Isn't that to do with our audit?
Yes. It's by Homeland Security.
You say.
I'm gonna sign over there. Casey, you get to sign again.
I'll make motions up, ready?
Okay. And on the segregation of duties policy, um, I'm not, first by officially John and Todd, that one you're saying?
Do you want to pull this out?
Well, I was just waiting to speak to us before we go then.
But you're saying this one.
May is on the right side.
We signed on, I signed on the wrong side. Well, I have to have you white tomorrow.
Why did, um, we want to, um, so.
And we got both, we can lay in again.
We got yea and nay. Yea, now we can't do all.
Okay, one, four.
I doubt if he's here.
He's been sending emails, so he might.
Hey Todd? On the segregation of duties, did you take a look at that? You're fine with it? Okay, sounds good, thanks Todd. He's fine. I have a motion Minister Stacker, do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. I oppose, motion carried unanimously.
I mean, the policy that we received as we can county.
Yeah, that was just a sample one that I.
Are you going to?
It's already done.
Forward to the other one?
Yeah, yeah, I will, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a sample one, and the new one has the signatures on it, so I will forward that, I'll send it with the signature.
Thank you.
Next, we have the third reading, or second reading of the ATV UTV ordinance, one-one-four dash B. Want me to start? Start reading it. An ordinance regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road vehicles in Cassous County. The ordinance shall design the county roads, secondary roads, and all terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles may operate. The definition of terms used in this ordinance are, all terrain vehicles are defined by the Iowa Code Section three-two-one-one dash one. Means a motorized vehicle with not less than three and not more than six non-highway tires. That is limited in engine displacement to less than one thousand cubic centimeters, and total dry weight is less than one hundred, one thousand two hundred pounds. And that has a seat or saddle designed to be straddled by the operator, and handlebars for steering control. Off-road utility vehicle, as defined by the Iowa Code Section three-two-one-one dash one. Means a motorized vehicle, not less than four, not more than eight non-highway tires, on rubberized tracks. That is limited in engine displacement to less than one thousand five hundred cubic centimeters. And in total dry weight of not more than two thousand pounds, and that has a seat that is a bucket or bench designed, not intended to be straddled by the operator. And a steering wheel or control levers for control. Three, primary roads means those roads and streets with both inside and outside the boundaries of municipalities. Which are under the jurisdiction of Iowa Department of Transportation, including state highways one-sixty-nine, eighteen, seventeen, fifteen, and nine. Roadway, as defined by Iowa Code Section three-two-one-one dash one. Means that portion of the highway improved, designed, or ordinarily used for vehicle travel. Five, sec- secondary roads means those roads under the jurisdiction of Cassous County Secondary Road Department. Secondary roads do not include primary roads. A registered all-terrain vehicle or off-road utility vehicle may be operated on all secondary roads during the hours of five AM to eleven-thirty PM. In Cassous County, pursuant to the restrictions in this ordinance, and those restrictions imposed by the Iowa Code. A person shall not operate an all-terrain vehicle. And off-road utility vehicle under any of the following conditions. At a rate of speed greater than reasonable, or operating under existing conditions having to do regarding to the traffic surface. And any other conditions existing, but not greater than thirty-five miles to hour. In a careless, reckless, or negligent manner, as to. Endanger any person, including the operator, cause injury or damage to person or property. To take unnecessary skating or sliding, or cause any wheel or wheels to unnecessarily lose control with the ground. When using a level B roadway, the operator shall use extra caution, especially when the roadway is wet. Three, without a lighted headlamp, a red rear lamp, and equipped with at least one mirror. So located as to reflect to the operator a view of the rear of the vehicle, a distance of two hundred feet. Four, with a firearm in the person's possession, unless it is unloaded, enclosed in a carry case. However, a non-ambulatory person may carry an on-case, unloaded firearm while operating or riding an altering vehicle. Or an off-road utility vehicle. In any tree nursery or planting in a manner which destroys growing stock. On public land, ice, snow, in violation of official signs prohibiting such operation. Number seven, in any park, wildlife area, preserve, refuge, or game management area, gravel pit, or under property owned by Cassous County. Eight, upon any portion of a meandering stream, or bed of a non-meandering stream. Which has been identified as a navigable stream or river by the Department of Natural Resources. And which is covered by water. This provision does not apply to design riding areas, design riding trails, the use of crossing for agricultural purposes. The use of construction vehicles engaged in lawful activity, and our operation of all terrain vehicles on ice. Number nine. Go ahead.
Number nine, on snowmobile trails except where designated by Cassous County as a primary snowmobile trail sponsor. Number ten, upon an operating railroad right-of-way. An altering vehicle may be driven directly across a railroad right-of-way only at established crossings. This provision does not apply to a law enforcement officer or railroad employee with authority to enter upon the railroad right-of-way. And the lawful performance of their duties. Number eleven, upon any primary road within Cassous County. However, such vehicle may be driven directly across such primary road at an established crossing. This provision does not apply to a law enforcement officer in the lawful performance of their duties. Twelve, without first yielding to all other traffic. Thirteen, with more persons on the vehicle than it was designated to carry. No riders shoved in the box of an off-road utility vehicle, even if equipped with seats and seat belts. Fourteen, on any riding area or trail unless the trail is designated by sign as open to all terrain and off-road utility vehicle operation. Fifteen, in any ditch within Cassous County. This does not include farmers who are using their vehicles exclusively as farm implements while engaged in farming. Operation of all other vehicles is confined to the travel portion of the roadway only. Sixteen, unless the operator is at least eighteen years of age, has a valid driver's license, the vehicle is duly registered, and the operator has proof of insurance. However, if the operation is between sunrise and sunset, and is incidental to the vehicle's use for agricultural purpose. Purposes as set forth in Iowa Code Section three-twenty-one point two thirty-four A subsection one, paragraph A. The operator must be at least sixteen years of age. Seventeen, without wearing a properly adjusted or passing seatbelt if the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle is so equipped. Eighteen, without the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle bearing sixteen square inches of red and white reflective tape. Or a slow-moving vehicle sign affixed to the rear of the vehicle so that it is clearly visible. Section five, requirements. No person shall operate an all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle on any secondary road for any purpose. Unless the operator possesses the following. One, proof that the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle is registered with the Iowa DNR. Two, proof of ownership, including but not limited to bill of sale, registration, and/or other documentation. Three, proof of the operator's age and a valid driver's license. Four, if the operator was born after nineteen ninety-five, proof of passing an Iowa DNR-approved ATV education course. Five, proof that the owner and operator have liability insurance covering operation of the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle on secondary roads. In the amount required by the Code of Iowa. Section six, exempt vehicles. The registration requirements of this ordinance shall not apply to the following described all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles. One, all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles owned by the United States, this state, or another state. Or by a governmental subdivision thereof, and used for enforcement, search and rescue, or official rescue and studies. But not for recreational or commercial purposes. Two, all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles used in accordance with Section three-twenty-one point two thirty-four A subsection one, paragraph A. Three, all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles used exclusively as farm implements. Section seven, penalties. Violation of the ordinance shall constitute a county infraction punishable by a fine of sixty-five dollars to six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Plus the applicable court surcharges and costs. An owner or operator who produces to the clerk of court prior to the date of the person's court appearance, as indicated on the citation. The necessary proof that the requirements set out in section five were in effect at the time the person was stopped and cited. Shall not be convicted of a county infraction, and the citation issued shall be dismissed by the court. Upon dismissal, the court or clerk of court shall assess the cost of the action against the defendant made on the citation. Section eight, severity of the cause. If any of the provisions of this ordinance are for any reason illegal or void, then the lawful provisions of this ordinance, which are separable. From said unlawful provisions shall be and remain in full force and effect, the same as if the ordinance contained no illegal or void provisions. Section nine, repeal it. All ordinance or parts of this ordinance in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section eight, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective upon passage and publication pursuant to Iowa Code Section three-thirty-one point three-oh-two subsection.
They tell it?
Yes.
It goes to eight, and section nine, section eight again, shouldn't it be section ten?
Good. I did that. We can make that.
We'll make that adjustment.
Excellent. Thank you, Ken.
That completes the second reading. I'm assuming you want to waive the third reading? Otherwise Casey, a trip turn.
I agree.
I have a motion to approve the second reading and waive the third reading of the ATV UTV ordinance of one-one-four dash B. Do I have a second?
And this is voting for approval of one-four.
Yeah. I have a second, Minister Stacker. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stacker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Yeah, why don't you fix it, and then we'll sign it. Thank you. Next, we have the agreement for this, with the city of Albana to use a storage at Philip Street Building. Todd, do you have anything else on it?
I made those changes or revisions from last week, and so they should be.
Tammy has the print on.
So it just needs to be approved and then presented to the city.
I would make the motion that we approve that. Mr. Casey, you second sit. Have any discussion on the motion? Hearing not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have discussion with Todd Holmes regarding malpractice litigation attorney to review the DD seven ruling.
I had some communication with an attorney last week, he declined, recommended another. I got an email from that attorney saying that he's willing to look into it, as long as there's not a conflict, so I'm supposed to call him today. So I will talk to him today and make sure that there's a conflict, and then should have one on board for you to review by next week.
Okay, so would you put that in on the agenda for next week? Okay, thank you Todd. Next. Decision, resolution on approval of Carmen Summit Agriculture and Mitigation Plan.
I can start that off. Yeah, um, last week, I presented the board with the Shelby County ordinance.
Yeah.
The first draft that they have. And requested that you guys review that and let me know if that's what you're wanting me to. Adapt to Cassous County for your approval. So I think today would be the day that you want to, let me know what direction you want to go. You now have two, one that's already passed, the other has not. We have Boca on us, and we have Shelby.
You guys want?
We want Shelby.
You like what the setbacks are? You're staying eighteen hundred feet instead of a thousand from residents?
I don't know how many people have a chance to look at it, but currently, I'm sorry if you come wrong, but Shelby County has them there. They have a two-mile setback from city limits, they have a half-mile setback from a church, school, air facility, or hospital. Or in the local public park or area. Thousand feet from an occupied structure, thousand feet from a confined animal feeding operation. I don't know if I'm comfortable with a thousand feet from an occupied residence. There was a model study done a while back on eight-and-a-half inch pipe. If that were to explode at, I think it was two thousand PSI, which this one would be operating at higher than that. And be a larger pipe through the area right south of town. But a lethal dose of CO2 would travel thirteen hundred feet in three-and-a-half minutes. Um, it's not a lot of time to respond for something that's lethal to anybody's life, to part of its. Obviously, but wind, humid, stuff like that will play a factor in how fast that moves, which direction it goes. One of the things in that model study was that they, a basement is a low-lying area with moisture to attract that to. I guess in my home, it, my kids sleep in the basement. I would like, if possible, to see that at least a half mile. I don't know if that's capacity too much or not, but I mean, our current windmill restrictions and confinement restrictions. Are more than a thousand feet, and they're not potentially deadly to humans.
If I may, I would like to add to that. There's not been a specific study done in regards to summit and the exact size pipe they're gonna use. Also the valve distances on this pipeline through our county. And so we need to know about the fatality and the hazard zones involved. So, in my opinion, a half mile is, I think it should be a mile from anybody's house, in my opinion, but that's just me. I would think a half mile at the very minimum from an occupied structure. I mean, we're basically leaving this to you guys to protect us, our homes, our families, our kids.
Any more discussion?
Mining one run through, our farm's twenty-four inch. It's what's on our paper.
Is that by the barbecue place, or up on the ridge?
Five foot deep and twenty-four inch.
Twenty-two hundred PSI?
I didn't say anything about PSI, but it's twenty-four inch, nothing less than twenty-four inch.
And then now this is the nearest valve. So if it doesn't, you know, the valve spacing is, is just as important as the size of the pipe as well.
I don't understand these valves, and that guy tried to explain it, that something's going twenty-two hundred PSI, then all of a sudden they had a leak and the brake goes on, what's it do? Boom, blood body, it's gonna blow at twelve then.
It, it, from their explanation, it's not like it just slams down, it slowly closes, but that's part of the factor on how much we come out to, so.
And you gotta remember, this just isn't about the impacted summit landowners, that's also for the navigator landowners with the north end of the couch as well. If I may, I, you know, we talk about it, it's a funny picture, it's always a thousand words. See what we're talking about here. Here's, uh, appreciate the, I have, there's the eight-inch one, eight-inch, and there's a channel this way. So, you know, I, I know most of the basement, I know quite a bit. And it's a swivel pond, and, and sometimes it just happens, it can stay on, I think, for us.
Whole bit below, what's the school, two, two and a quarter miles?
Well, it'd been a reroute of your pipe online, I can help. And not to forget, you have the hospital, less than a block away, you start touching high school. And not much farther than elementary. So I was in the urgency room, this one went longer, I sat for a little. I sat there and thought, if that ever happened, people here have no chance. We talked about four minutes, I mean, everybody not want to breathe for four minutes. What are we doing? You know? I, I don't know. We've asked the governor, State of Ireland, we need with this. She has not, and I think we have to take over her responsibility. She took that, oh, protect this service. And we're asking you, and I'm sorry, I don't get that tone of voice, just asking for it then.
So you'd want two and a half from the town?
Well, is that
Right now it's two.
It's, it's two miles currently from the town. I don't want to push it on anybody else, I don't want to myself. Want to protect the hospital. The problem is, is nobody really knows. It's kind of like your insurance, you never know how good your insurance is, so you have a plan. We don't know what's going to happen with this stupid thing until it has leak. And then when somebody's buried in the ground, it's too late.
You know, there are, there are some CO2 lines already in the United States, not that many. And most of them operate like five hundred PSI. And they're being used for oil recovery. This thing takes it to a level.
Is it because there ain't that many pump, what is there five pump stations between the start and end?
I'm not sure about that.
So is that why they're running five PSI? That they keep it down?
Well, they just have, I'm not sure.
They had, so we had pressure to stay up.
Right.
This way, that's the way to me.
Yeah. If they don't keep it under, yeah, I pressure them to stay up.
From what, from what I recall, I think it was supposed to operate at thirteen hundred, but I think their max was twenty-two or twenty-three, I don't remember, but I think, I think it still is operating lower typically. But they could add capacity by increasing pressure, so it's, it's definitely an option for them.
I mean, if they, if they can build it to the capacity or whatever the capacity is, when they're being paid with product, you know, as much as they can.
Yep.
And that's just going to increase pressure. One of the problems is the summit was here back in March or April and explained to you guys about how many tax dollars they were going to generate within this county. Came up with a very fictitious figure. And they also said that they were going to help with the emergency equipment and personnel training. They failed to do any of that yet, and they still haven't filed an emergency action plan or hazard mitigation plan. And the IUB asked them to do that almost a year ago. So it kind of makes me think that they could care less about the safety of the people in this county or in the impacted counties. But yet they already filed Exhibit H for Kusut County landowners for the potential eminent domain.
Which was false. My landlord was Nancy was, she was falsified.
So, so it's hard to take anything they say at face value. I think it's important to last meeting I attended here, talked about, had not been good for decades. Hopefully. And in California, it was a big cough on the car. Well, California with car regulation, let's say back to around Reagan, it just passed. I don't even know if they're going to have them. Just look over my, try to do things done and tap on the number of years, one, twelve other states. So the big selling point is helping us through this. I think that's just made the point that they've already, since that's, since they announced it last fall, I, I thought they never did make sale up there. That was their job was to sell this to us, and I thought they felt like sure, felt like they didn't even have to. But I think with the approvals coming through, they felt, weren't you saying, you know, look, changing things, they've already changed regulations. Well, is this going to be just what, seven, eight year bomb? It's all land destroyed, maybe? Damage, dangers? So I think their, their trust, their argument is going away. Can't be the same problem.
Would you guys be content with a half mile from the building site, seven mile?
Not sure if there'd be how do you go about changing that or implementing that at a certain point where you get to where it's not within reason or tolerable?
Well, it's got to be you know, written in a way so that it's you know, it's justified. I mean, you just can't say twenty miles. I guess that would eliminate the ability for them to pursue me. And there has to be a legitimate reason for each provision that you put in there. Given what you said, I don't see half miles being unreasonable. I mean, it's uncertain. You're saying eighteen hundred feet for twelve hundred feet for an eight inch pipe? We don't know what pipe, what size pipe it's going in, so.
Sometimes, you know, we've heard different numbers on the pipe.
It's all getting us, so.
I think that's a concern of mine, given the fact, you know, that, you know, what I've heard today is, is there's a lot of uncertainty in that. What was this Exhibit H that you were falsified as a premium?
On Exhibit H for Kusut County, they're listing the people who haven't signed yet. And they're having a map, and those in red have, have it signed, and those in white, it looks like, have signed. My area is in white, I have not signed.
Okay.
And I'm very concerned that other people are going to see it and say, well, look at her. She's signed.
I mean, that, that's a request for eminent domain, and they can add on to that, remove from it, I believe. They can keep managing that list, so they might not have it fully updated, but I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, and, and so there has to be a legitimate purpose and reason for the provisions. And obviously, you're dealing with your broad power of protecting health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. You also have interests as far as protecting property rights in your drainage districts, so I think that, that you're not necessarily being unreasonable, given the uncertainty of what size pipe and what potential damage is there. You know, you're obviously not going to be able to legislate it from, from habiting just by making a broad stroke of the brush and preventing it from even being possible. So you have to, you have to balance, you know, the, the interests of, of the health, safety, and welfare of the public and, and, you know, the interest of being able to allow for there to be industry. And whatever, in this situation, it's limited to the asset slipper night line. But, you know, it's for allowed to be that coexistence between industrial pursuits and protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the, of the people. So in what I'm hearing, a half mile, which is two thousand six hundred forty feet, you have to do the math. I'm a lawyer, not an mathematician, but the you know, I think that there's some legitimate basis behind that, according to the research, you'd have to be able to support that with whatever research is out there, not sure that there is. All these things have been in existence, but I don't think that that would be asking too much. And this is just the Shelby County ordinance, and that's just a county that determined that a thousand feet is, is enough to protect people in occupied structures and confinement livestock operations. Given what I've heard, I don't know, but I'm not a knife prod on it, you know, so that might be something further researched is necessary. But certainly, I don't think you're outside of the realm of protecting with your authority the health, safety, and welfare of making a man.
You said a half mile is twenty-four hundred sixty foot?
Probably sixteen.
Two thousand six hundred forty.
Todd, what about the people that have already signed and it's closer than two thousand six hundred forty feet? That, that's a concern to me because you're passing an ordinance after the fact.
Well, I mean, it is what it is. And it might be subject to attack, but, you know, I think initially your view should be what we need to do to protect the citizens of Kusut County, but you added from broad spectrum. And, you know, if that should happen to somehow jeopardize already existing
easements.
Easements. That may be a problem. But you know, I, I don't know that that necessarily should be your concern when you're looking at it today. You know, if they feel that they've in some way been harmed, that they can, they can, you know, pursue any type of action that they feel necessary to do. You know, it's not unlike what, what wind line with, you know, the, the ordinance regarding the wind germ. You know? This is relatively new. I've heard, you know, that there's some and what's been demonstrated with the Exhibit H, you know, there's some tactics that aren't necessarily fair, so because it's just winter, so it's not verified, not justified, I don't know. But Exhibit H is kind of, in my opinion, something to be concerned about. But looking at it from the standpoint of where we go, we need to look at it from the standpoint where we can do to protect our citizens from this potential explosion to current accident if it goes through. Yeah, if it somehow leaks or explodes or.
Yeah, we don't appreciate them two people sitting right about where you were, and I asked them if they had offered Nancy a hundred thousand. And she doesn't sign, and then eminent domain comes in, you're only going to give her ten, and they're like, oh, that'll never happen. Well, Matt told me the other day, he knows a guy that they offered him a good chunk of money, and they told him, either you sign, or you're getting this much from eminent domain, and it was eight times less money. And they sat there and told us, oh, we'll, we'll never do that, well, they're already trying it. But I don't trust the company at all.
And they currently do not have their construction permit. Yeah, that's why I kind of feel it's important to kind of try to get something in place, because if you're, once they have the permit, then you're kind of behind a ball. And then you come back and like, say, well, we already had the permit, couldn't do anything prior to that. I don't know if that's the report or not, but it kind of seems.
So you could do two miles from the city limits? Anybody from the city here? I know you guys are all farmers, I don't know that young lady back there, where, where she lives.
I'm on a different project.
Oh, come on.
I'm a neighbor, we're teens.
The other thing to consider in the ordinance is that the half mile from nursing homes, hospitals. And I don't understand why it's a half mile for them, but two miles for the city. I think it should be.
When I talk to DK or Shelby County, they use two miles to city limits just because it goes to allow for expansion, you know, some sort
Oh, okay.
Cities, you know, with the building outward stuff, and so you have to worry that's going to start and stop, probably it's going to take to get there.
Well, and to elaborate on that, the two miles would kind of be founded in law and ordinances like Doug said in one of the conversations on Isaac this last week about pipeline, but there were several times it was talked about. And the two mile setback around cities is because if a county is not zoned, they can't have a two mile zoning from a city that extends that far. So that's kind of where that would be based from, I believe. But when you look through the ordinance here, a lot of Shelby counties references their comprehensive plan and their zoning. It also talks, I don't remember which area it was, it was talking about their Board of Health making a statement. Has issued a public health position statement that addressed this five things. And that was one of the places that thousand feet was listed. So I don't know that we can just say half a mile, or two miles, or twenty miles. Kind of what Todd was saying, you have to back it up with your justification and explanation behind all that. So I think we'd have to, one, review our comprehensive plan, maybe make changes to that, how it all fits in zoning, and tie all those pieces together, otherwise it's not going to be worth anything.
So I have a quick question, just to be clear, our setback for wind turbine is eighteen hundred feet, is that correct?
There's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yes, sixteen. Okay.
I believe everything. Well, so another thousand feet, give or take, for a hazardous pipeline, in my opinion, is not a big ask. I mean, because, because is it, is a wind turbine hazardous? Other than the shadow flicker? I mean, if you go sit and look at the strobe light, I mean, it's not going to, and, and wind turbine is not going to emit an asphyxia. It's going to kill you. I mean, I, I
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying you have to support it and back it up.
A farther distance. Just depends what, what facts you want to use or what studies, because there's lots of studies out there. It's just so many of them are in their infancy stages, they haven't, you know, they're working on it, but I'll be educational around here, takes time.
Hey, you know where I live? You know where the difference puts their tanks up there, where they fill them up? How far do you think that is? Thousand foot?
Probably not even.
Four mile? See, I've had them, the tanks valve, let's go, middle of the night, I'm going outside smelling, got a call. I mean, just because you're talking with the heavy wind or the heavy air at night, I think just floats across Irvington. So I'd say a half mile, I'd like to have those tanks a half mile away, which I can't, but so I can see what you guys want a half mile for.
Well.
The hazard.
On what you said, you know, at least if it's in the moment, you take, you're going to smell that.
Yeah.
It's not receivable.
Can't drive away from it. Or CO2, my vehicle won't run.
It's actually a miracle.
They'll have to do like California and get an electric car. Then they don't need ethanol.
Nope.
We'll leave two miles, leave a quarter mile from the park, but a half mile from residents? Sound good?
At least I have fun.
At least I have fun.
Mr. Casey, what would be your motion to accept which one and how far, how much do you want to change it?
Let me ask one. You live right outside of Albana, Judy.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable? But then you're probably a mile and a half from your house, are you comfortable? You live up on a hill, but still it's going to, it'll climb.
We're definitely within that two miles of the city.
Is the park set in fact to be Smith? Or is it from Seams Park? There's a lot of people camp there, over Woodmore.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of people out there. I think it ought to be a half mile from the park, because anybody's camping there is going to get it. From the Seams Park? Okay, so that'd be I'd say minimal half mile from any residents. Quarter mile from any confinement building. Let's see. Half mile house, quarter mile hog save. Half mile from any park recreation area. And two and a half miles from any city, or city ordinance, or a city boundary.
Resonating. jurisdiction.
Yeah, I think we're two and a half miles from the city limits.
I've got a half mile from park or recreation area, half mile from the residents, quarter mile from
hog save? Or confinement, I guess.
Confinement, there, I got it. And two and a half miles from the city.
Yeah. So that'd make a motion on.
And you want to follow the Shelby?
Yeah, follow the Shelby precedent.
So you got half from the park and recreation area, half mile from the residents, quarter mile from confinement, and two and a half miles from the city.
Hospitals would be
Well, you'd be three and a half mile.
Two and a half miles because the city limits is right on the edge of the city limits. Which I think schools ought to be included, but there
It would be, it's in the city.
Two and a half miles, so. That'd be safe.
Todd, do you see any problems with any of that?
Not initially, no. What I want to do is if you want to follow your ordinance around the Shelby County ordinance. Have you seen the document? I have. It would do because obviously it's a zoning or possibly a zoning amendment or amendment to the zoning ordinance. So I think it's crucial to compare and get into that, especially when all is in the zoning ordinance, they have a firm hand on that. So if that's what the board wants to have presented, we can work on that and get it completed. Or do a review and.
I'd like to add all roads. I'd like board under. All roads. I don't know if that's in there. And our drainage tile, was that the Pocahontas or was it this one? That was eight feet under any county main board. What do you think on the drainage, Roger? Eight feet under any county main tile? Or I don't want to dub, because that tile is going to dig and it's going to go like that. You got an eight inch main, now you got a four inch main. I just think five would be enough.
Long to get it under deep enough so that it's not going to affect any future development. That's the biggest deal. If you want to redo the main and put it in deeper.
If it's eight foot down, you're going to dig a main, need to dig deeper. Go eight feet under any county main.
You have a procedure.
Right.
For drainage district facilities. So I don't believe you should.
Danger.
But anything, this is zoning that you're talking about Shelby County. Cassuth County has drainage district procedures. Pocahontas County procedures contains a lot of language that Cassuth County's procedures has.
So we're getting there.
So I don't believe you guys are going to have to grant an easement to these people, as trustees of drainage districts. You grant easements, you may grant the terms along.
How many see you want the?
That's what we did with the wind.
I just leave that part out then?
Well, the roads is going to be a separate agreement.
That's.
So you don't need to.
So we won't need to include that.
Discuss anything on that.
So roads.
For drainage districts, so it'd just be the zoning on the set max for different facilities. Property.
Could I ask a question? If we do this or they adopt it, what does that set us up for as a challenge? So will they come after us?
A court in battle?
Okay, so what I'm wondering is, I like these numbers, but say we stick with what Shelby has. And if you could get eight, ten counties to adopt the same set of ordinances, does that, can they go together on this fight or are we on our own no matter what?
Well.
Would we be better off with numbers?
Well, you're always better off with numbers. You know, if the action, if they do pursue an action, then that action would be within their control as to how they draft the complaint and who they include in the complaint, whether they do it individually, if they just do it with all the different counties involved. I presume other counties are doing this. That presumption is primarily based upon the fact that the the email that was sent to me that had the attached first draft of the ordinance had a head language in there that if anyone asks, here's the, here's the ordinance. So there must be quite a few who are interested in getting the terms and in language of the ordinance. So, yeah, you know, Pocahontas is doing something. Obviously, we're considering, I don't know if any of the other counties that are in the proposed pathway are.
There's others looking at it. They're about where we're at.
I don't think you're going to have much of a problem if you justify what you're putting in. I mean, you know, no one can argue with the board supervisor's power to regulate the health, safety and welfare and protect its citizens. I mean, there's, it's basically unchallengeable as long as you can say that's, you know, point to a specific reason for including that in. It cannot be simply to disallow any type of pipeline to go through. You can't do that. You have to justify what you're putting in there. So, you know, it can be, it can be strict and it can, it can set out specific parameters. But they have to be based upon some sort of evidence or supported by studies that if something goes wrong. Because that's the problem with what we have. I mean, we've had this type of approach with many things, you know, you think that it's safe and then all of a sudden you find out it's not. And then things get improved, things get changed. You know, I watch, periodically watch this show on TV called Air Disasters. Don't ask me why, it's interesting, but one of the things that they always get to at the end is out of this tragedy event, newly improved safety regulations come about. You know, so we want to try and prevent that situation where all of a sudden something happens and, oh, we need to do this differently. We want to try and prevent that. And I would assume everybody wants that, including, you know, the pipeline companies. Yeah, they want to prevent that. But you have competing interests. You know, the citizens of Cassuth County are interested in protecting their families, you know, their livestock, their way of life, their property, which is where the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors should be. Whereas solutions or anybody else is, you know, they're looking at, you know, providing the safeguards and those types of things. But they want to build a pipeline and it's, you know, for profit. So, you know, you have to, you have to weigh those competing odds and determine what's, what's going to protect our citizens to the best of our abilities.
Because Matt, you said thirteen hundred feet for a mountain trail.
Yep.
So that would give, if it blows by someone's house, you got eight minutes to get out of it.
That's cut. No, that was filed with the I U B, that study.
So you got eight minutes, because that'd be twenty six hundred forty is a half mile and thirteen times two, twenty six, so.
That's not real comforting.
No, it's not.
You can't smell it, you can't see it.
I can from that perspective.
Presumably you could hear it, but, you know, that depends on what type of problem it's probably done with. You know, and we're at the fault. I mean, you're going to, you know, holler out to the livestock, say, hey, you got eight minutes to, you know, to get out of there? No. And now granted, those types of things would be covered, I'm sure, by insurance and there'd be some ability to recoup whatever loss. But, you know, initially, I think we need to look at it from the standpoint that we want to try and prevent that. So that's kind of where we are. So I don't know, you know, to get back to answer the question, I don't know, you know, if you know, if we should approach it from the standpoint of getting all the counties on board or not. I think looking at it from the standpoint of the county dollar, I think that there's, there's obviously an interest to try and avoid any potential catastrophe.
I got to finish. You made a comment, one of the key words you just said, the problem, pipelines, companies doing this for a profit. And I'm all about the half mile set that for our state being there, but. But my question to you, you mentioned that word profit. Safety is number one in my book. What value is it bringing, this pipeline bringing to our county? Matt mentioned, I don't agree with the figures, the tax dollar, what I read in the papers. They have to write that, that would be easy. What value is it doing for our county? I'm not talking the private sector, they have to go up into landlord, I'm talking the county. Is the county going to profit off this? They should. That's what the pipeline is coming down for.
Well, I think the profit to the county is your extra margin that you're going to get on a bushel of corn. If ethanol remains viable, if ethanol is not viable, half your corn market's gone.
I don't, I don't think that's going to profit.
Well, and dollar wise, there's also, and this Shelby County one, eight point seven speeds and assessments. And it has, which I don't know exactly who this applies to, but it says an application fee, an amount of hundred dollars for each affected person identified in the application. And then it also has an annual assessment fee and the amount of one hundred sixteen ninety-two per mile of pipeline constructed, operated and maintained in it now. Or an amount equal to the most current user to be assessed by, whichever is greater. So, and it says the property owner seeking a condition, you use permit, shall pay fifty dollar application fee, but.
Mr. Casey, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second to that motion to have Todd draw that up?
Clarify, it is the motion to Todd make the modifications and then we present to the board for review.
Yes.
Yes.
You want to read that?
Go ahead.
I'm involved with Navigator up north. You ever really address, can they go through public rail? And I'm not talking roads or right of ways. There's a Cassuth County Conservation Board owns a whole railroad track and I think has proposed to go through there. Is that legally okay or do you have to impede this center or whatever you're submitting?
Talking about that recreational area that they got on the old railroad track south of that, can't think of it. Yep, yep, you're right. Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Is it a park?
No, it's a hunting area.
Oh, it's six, I got a half mile for a park.
Is it supposed to go right through there?
It's going to be, but some south side there, where it goes east west, it is, that's abandoned too. So it's got to go through because they don't take it clear south, which would be a mile south.
I don't have the answer to that. Todd, you got any idea?
Well, it's county property, so you, in that situation, approach it as.
Yeah.
That'd be my thought.
That's, they have been communication with the county situation. And Stoney is love of air.
So in that situation, it would just be, you know, your control of your own property, but it's a, that's the landowners in here. An approach for potential easement.
Yeah, go ahead, read it, Ken.
Okay, the motion is to have Todd Thomas make modifications to the Shelby County ordinance as with the following setbacks, a half mile from any residence, a quarter mile from any confinement building, a half mile from any park or recreation area, two and a half miles from any city limits and to bore under all roofs. And then present.
Right there.
To present to the board.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I'll second Mr. Casey's motion. Do a roll call vote on the motion.
For discussion on the motion, I, I don't know that I disagree with the setbacks, but the process of it, I think we have to review our comprehensive plan and go through all our stuff with zoning to make sure whatever we're doing is support. I don't think we can just pull numbers out of the hat and call it an ordinance. I don't think that's going to stand up in court. I don't want to spend time on something that isn't going to actually be effective.
Please do the roll call vote.
Better.
No, and I would like it in the minutes that it's process based, not numbers, for my reason.
Casey?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
It does pass because there's only three of us here today. It's not a resolution, some majority. So it would pass for today. I don't agree with it for the process, like I said, but it does pass.
I think it passes today because all we're doing is having Todd review it.
It's, it's just a simple bill.
And it was.
Yeah, and quite frankly, I have the direction basically that you're interested in, in starting the process. It sounds like all three of you are in agreement with going and patterning any pattern. Patterning any of the future drafts with the Shelby County ordinance and put something together for the board to review and discuss. For it.
Right.
Whether, you know, because Mr. Stecker's disagreement was purely just based on the numbers, half mile, quarter mile.
Correct.
You know, that it should be in some sort of evidence based research on, you know, the potential hazardous rank. So I'm comfortable with your direction by the board today to draft a first draft of Cassuth County ordinance patterned after the Shelby County ordinance. With, you know, the setbacks as discussed, that you guys can discuss what you want to do as far as specific numbers from that point. But what I wanted today primarily, and I thank everybody for coming, is direction as far as which one you wanted to go after. Because there are two different ordinance, one's a resolution, one's an ordinance. And as Doug pointed out, Pocahontas has a lot of specific specific terminology in there that we have in our comprehensive plan. So I think that's the direction I need and I'm comfortable with that.
Well, and another thing that was discussed down at ISAC with the pipelines was Shelby County has filed a motion, a petition to intervene in the Summit Parking Solutions document and a motion to require a revised petition. There was substantial discussion about both of those. And there was talk of trying to do something as all ninety-nine counties through ISAC. The executive committee will be looking into that, but I don't know how effective that would be because you have ninety-nine counties. So it's hard to speak with the exact same voice, especially when we're talking about two counties that pass different regulations in regard to the pipeline. So one thing I was going to bring up during board discussion, but it kind of fits here is do we want to file a petition to intervene or do anything in regards to both of these projects? But then also on that line, we could potentially look at teaming up with other counties, because I don't know that it's going to go through ISAC. But if we got on board with other counties for strength in numbers, a whole nine yards, we possibly have to have, I don't know if we'd need a twenty eighty to work with them on a joint lawsuit or some sort of agreement. But the strength in numbers concept would apply to that as well. And that would cut down on our legal fees if we have one attorney fighting for, or even a couple, fighting for a whole group of counties rather than us being on our own. So a lot of pieces to that puzzle too.
I think we're a little far behind on what should have been started a long time ago then.
Well, to some extent, yes, to some extent, no. That was one of the comments by the Shelby County Supervisor that was talking about this quite a bit is a lot of it falls back on your comprehensive plan and zoning stuff that way. He said he was surprised by what they already had in place and they tied it in with that. They didn't create a whole bunch of new stuff, but he said, if you're going to try and create something new from scratch that you don't already have, the time, timeframe is. the time, timeframe is almost run out for that, to go through the process with the timeframe set out. So, that would be an uphill challenge for Thomas Project Navigators, a little farther behind, but, um, to have something that's actually going to stand up against a lawsuit and being able to back that up and correlate it to everything else that's involved, that's gonna take a substantial amount of time, so.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it. We're a half hour behind on the public hearing, go ahead. I have never heard of a deal.
That's my knowledge.
I, I've heard of nothing.
Doug, have you heard anything?
The only communication I have ever had is when they sat there where Todd's sitting, that's far as I've seen.
Funded actually by oil companies? Because piping the CO2 into the ground thins out the oil, which makes it travel easier with their pipes. And oil companies stand to increase production any or thirty-six percent by driving it to the ground. Anybody?
I've heard that discussed in other places, but I don't think that applies to this project because this is specifically sequestering it in a storage area. And from everything I've been told, that's the only thing, it can't be used for oil. But I do know it was talked about, they use CO2 to inject in the ground in other stations, so.
It's called fracking.
Good.
CO2's heavier than oil, so CO2 settles on the bottom and the oil comes up, then they can pump it off, so then they can make more money.
But I don't think that correlates to these projects.
The, the largest oil driller in North Dakota is a investor in some pipeline, so.
And they can, some can get the forty-five Q money if they do sell it for oil recovery. They don't get quite as much, but then they get money from the oil drill.
Correct.
And Bruce Rastetter told the North Dakota Tribune, you can look it up, that they are looking at it. There is a possibility of.
By another methanol plants would benefit from the.
They'll receive carbon tax credit, that's what they're feared for.
I think we have to cut, cut this off because we have other things that have to get done today. Sorry.
Thanks, Doug.
Yep, thank you. You're up. Thank you, guys, for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a seat. We have a public hearing for a construction permit for a finishing site in section nineteen. Uh, Eagle Township.
This is actually an existing building already?
It is. We gotta open a hearing. A motion by Stecker, I'll second Mr. Stecker's motion. All those in favor of opening a hearing, please say aye. Aye, paused, motion carried. Go ahead.
This building was already constructed in two thousand and five. This is basically an update to the permit. Lucas, no Wiki, bought it just this year. And he's gonna fill it with select farms. I have a select talks for.
Christians.
Christians.
Christians and farms. How do you say the name?
Wiki?
Yeah.
Yep, no Wiki.
No, okay, thank you.
Yep.
And, uh, basically, all they, they came in, reviewed the two buildings that were up there, determined that the actual animal unit number was a little bit low. They raised the animal unit number, and by doing so, had to update all their paperwork to reflect that and have to do a management plan and setbacks and everything like that, which it still needs all that, like, fine, so.
Okay.
Um, 'cause I talked to the DNR Deal Office in Mason City, there was not really, they didn't have any concern when they reviewed it, that it still met all the setbacks, and there's, I mean, there's not gonna be any construction or anything at all, it's just, they determined that they could fit, I think it's like only sixty head that increased, sixty animal units.
As far as the manure on the acres, that stayed the same.
Pretty much, yeah. I think they had them ready enough already, but I was looking at it, so.
Did we have any public comments?
Looked like it's pretty close to Goose Lake when they're gonna spread it everywhere.
I know it's up there by Goose Lake and then over Emmett County.
It looked like Goose Lake was here and the manure was like.
Yeah, the.
And the funny.
Fox Lakes to the southwest and Goose Lake there, and, yeah, I don't want to have a creek for edge on it, but.
You gotta build a hog site by, you gotta build a hog site by Craig, that's law, ain't it? I mean, cows can get to, but.
In terms of the, I mean, as long as they're following their renewable management plan and spreading it responsibly.
Who's, who's gonna own the hogs?
Christians.
Christians and farms.
Yeah, I believe he said Christians and farms, yeah.
I usually don't ask that.
Are you with the company that did the plan, or?
Yes, yes, so I prefer capital man, so I don't put together the paperwork, so. Lucas was gonna be here, but nobody said he thirty-nine, thirty-ten, thirty-one, thirty, so, it was a little, that's, we're representing him.
So, and then, did you review that one, section, section four?
Oh, question, yeah, we had one, um, one correction we made here before, I had, it was correct on the, or the master matrix spreadsheet, um, but I just had highlighted basically the wrong one on the, so we went ahead and corrected that.
So it did change the points?
It did change the point.
Right, yeah, it didn't change the points because I had it right on the spreadsheet, um.
Yeah, it should have been four seventy, but on the, when you went through and tallied them up on the actual sheet, they're coming up with forty-five, Christie caught that, and, uh, then I went through and found it. Because when I first went through, we both came up four hundred eighty-five total points on the matrix. It's four seventy, but I found where it is, just the wrong, wrong column highlighted, so, got that.
Score decent though.
Yeah, it, yes, and you know where it's at. It looks pretty close to that if you're looking at it, but it's, you know, that's about really well where it's at, actually.
I see nobody, you're not here for this, so I see nobody for public comment. So, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Stecker, second by, I'll, by Casey to close the public hearing. All those, all right, we better do a roll call vote.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes. Power to the decision to approve.
So.
Motion by Stecker, I'll second his motion to approve the hog site. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes. We're good, thank you. Thank you, Christie. Good job, Christie.
Okay, good job.
Okay. I see that. He's, he's good at scribbling, but I'm, you know.
No, it's today, my head's was not in the game.
Do you wanna take a break now?
Yeah, can we take a break now?
Yeah, let's take a, let's take a ten minute break at least.
Oh.
I'm tired of hearing about. I don't know what the right answer is. The right answer is you could have been stopped at state. Well, somebody's far, but they don't control thirty-nine, thirty, yeah, they must be right, yes. And twenty minutes or forty minutes, you got any time? You want to take a, you want to take a break?
Yeah, we're gonna take a break, okay.
You listen, uh, I attend the ethanol plant, a couple weeks ago, there, uh, market to market claims with the letter, they're gonna get fifteen million dollars per plant. Each plant, which I think there's eight in the.
Per year.
Per year, for I don't know how many years. You stated that we're gonna get more money for our corn. Where is that in writing?
Their condition.
So it's one of these things they tell you to believe, so the public goes, okay, fifteen million, they processed nineteen million bushes of corn this past year, that's seventy-five cents a bush or more. Are they gonna pass any of that on? Absolutely not, no. So don't say that it's gonna increase our value.
I didn't say it increases, I said if it didn't have the ethanol plants, okay.
Possibly, but.
Well, it would.
It, it would be just supply and demand local level, it would change our basis, right?
I, I remember when we could, when we had corn here and couldn't get it shipped out, and we had eighty cent basis, ninety cent basis.
I, I realize that, but.
It was.
You know, I would like to see the letter come in and say, hey, you sell us this corn like four ounces in a year, you're five to send, five or ten cent bonus, you know, or a more expensive, anyway, warning. Or the landlords that are providing these pipelines going through, like, I can't even send them like, I mean, they all could have a year, you know.
I don't disagree with you, but that's how probably said it, though.
Yeah.
It's beyond our control.
That, that was my comment on increased value on corn, isn't really, they could sit, I talked to them enough that they promised you everything. Main thing is with the tile, you know, where they're gonna cross, I got, you guys, they're north of Salton, and I got patterns down there, and could, how?
That's, I don't see other things for the plant. Yes, there was a wetness factor, and there's stuff with Iowa State you can go through, and there's certain metrics, we could talk of some of that, but that's stuff that really shouldn't be added and downgraded, thinking, let's, for today's conversation, necessarily, because it went so long anyway. But there's a lot, there's a lot of tools we could use, it's just putting it all together.
I don't think it's right or wrong, I.
It's a, it's a private investment by big companies subsidizing this project. They're gonna make, another meeting I've been to, they're gonna make seven hundred fifty million a year on this project, Navigator, and is it, should go back to the, the corn producers or the people that are providing the ground. And I have seven or eight farms in my family that's going through this, and it just looks the hell out of me. And they can promise me whatever they want. I've been through county tile, uh, fire optic on, uh, the ditches. Oh, we'll fix it, eight years later, I gotta, I rock right through the tile. You think they'll do anything? Only way is it gets fixed, I go out there and fix it ourselves. They'll be there so you don't hit it, you know? But been through all that, county, you know, Holland's up there doing something a few years ago, they, he said they have a two-year warranty. You know, they didn't push the tile together, three, three different places that had to come in, the taxpayers had to pay for that. That's something that they should withstand lifetime, if they don't push that tile together. And I hope that it doesn't hand, same guy's doing it, that's managing that did two or three or four years ago, whenever that other one went through. That's asking, you don't get that stuff together, and then we gotta repay for it, but the supervisors sit here and say, well, they have a two-year, two-year window, and don't develop two and a half years, so, because it's on that, but when the tile aren't pushed together, whose fault is it? It's not your fault, not my fault, but I paid for it.
Yeah, we just dug up one level on rock that was put in a hundred years ago, and then we put it together, and it just failed.
Okay, yeah, and that's, that's, that's hand done, though.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you, you can't look under the ground and.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at, the tile alibis, so.
Yeah.
How, how do you, every tile they're gonna dig under, and then they're gonna, what's gonna keep that from settling? Well, we'll never know for years and years to come, never.
My son digs up tile, and they, I mean, I've seen lately that, and put in five-inch tile, that's about that tall. And because they didn't have to put it on the sheet.
Okay, mushroomed.
No, all mushroomed, and we've seen, I don't know how many lately, terrible. That's why, and I've dug up play tile, and I've never seen a play tile flash unless it was broke. So I, I go, I think your child says, do you wanna put in clay in that one?
No, I'm telling you, like, clay was better than plastic.
Oh shit, yeah, it's a brand, that is.
But we are more sensitive to install, it, it really is.
Yep.
It has to be installed very carefully.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you don't do a good job, it will.
That's the one thing, because it's known itself, I think, clearly, oh, we're gonna, the boys are never gonna come back in, correctly, states that were made, you know, and, 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 and. Maybe, yes, and, and.
There, there was the right place for a read.
I, I'm with you a bit, so, yeah, I don't think we should be counting minutes.
Oh, back to, why is ours the six inch? I've, I've had, you know, I think I've had plastic in the ground for fifty years. I'm glad I've had it in for fifty years too, but that's smaller stuff, so, I can correct, kinda agree with you, uh, especially if it's deep, you know? But they gotta get them pushed together, and if they don't, it's their fault.
Yeah. Sure, because I, I don't, my son dig up county, he's, I think, a county, it's a tremendous.
Thank, thanks for your time. Go ahead, take a, take a break, before we do.
Break, I need this to the bathroom.
That's what I said.
It's important.
You know.
I think it's a terrible matter, I mean.
What's the expert know today?
The expert has, there is no expert, it's, it's a difference of opinion, expert knows somebody else's things. Kinda like a judge, you know, a judge is whatever.
Right, you're just wondering. I argue we'll probably have more than ten minutes, but the other stuff's at ten, so.
I missed that, I missed that charge down, what the deal was on that, thank you. On their, five hundred bucks, she said they claim for, I assume, because they covered it in a building, what the hell, bill or?
Building, engineering building. Yeah, so I did talk to Spencer about that, and he said the papers and stuff that was all turned in for the completion hearing had all that factored in, but in the timeframe from when they sent us the bill for their engineering and when it processes through their system, it wasn't actually paid by us until that point, but it was just a lag in paperwork, basically. So it was all, it was supposed to all be.
What did you say about, you paid the bill there, right, so there was everything for you? I talked to Spencer.
For the construction or the engineer?
No, 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 we did that, the top, you know, they had to go in, it's spring.
We paid for the engineer.
We.
The district.
The district, why is that?
Well, we talked about that at the completion hearing.
Why is that?
I did not disagree with you.
No, I heard this thing a long time ago, you had to cheat out of a dollar, cheat out of a million. Don't forget, and the other deal with that intake up there, they're gonna prepare these.
What intake?
Okay, whether intake, excuse me, intake of the ditch, I think, or ground, or, or our ground.
Okay. I don't remember an intake now.
Well, that's what it is, it's like five, five, and then it's public sense, and they had it prepared, so, they're, 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 shouldn't be.
Right, so they're saying so.
They put it in. And seventy-five coming up there, that'll be a funny.
Do you wanna go down and talk to Marjorie on that, because I just did, well, yeah, I mean, with me.
That's fine, yeah.
Which is. I actually, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I was all done, Morris, thank you. Take care of your matters.
I'm getting close to all done.
Yeah, well, stay with, as long as you can.
We keep hearing, you know.
I'm getting the same way. I'm getting the same way. Thank you both so much.
That is not functioning, I'm not, I might coffee. I was listening so long by the time we were, it was time to vote, I didn't even know what I was doing. And I kept thinking it's ordinance, you know, where you have to have board and then, but yeah, you're right.
Well, and that was, that was my issue with it, like it's, you can't just. Well, in my opinion, you can't just pull numbers out and say this is what we're gonna do, like. It's not gonna fly in order. If it had been direct to have to draft an ordinance. We can talk about the numbers and all that. That's a five-second change in a computer, you can talk to the numbers. Whatever, but. I didn't, but. Wasn't a thing for today as far as I'm concerned, because we're not to that point. Process.
Thank you. That's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Because I understand that like we, it said to approve it and. Are we approving ordinance or are we?
He did.
Yeah, that's how it kind of sounded to me. That's why I was like, okay, wait, what are we actually doing here?
Yeah, you can't just take Shelby County's, change the Shelby to pursuit.
Yeah.
And that's.
And. He opened the hearing for the oxygen pipe finding without a vote to establish a. It was the.
Open hearing.
Uh, he, well, he voted on it, but it wasn't a roll call vote. I want to look up that hearing here at least.
It was all you can, I'd get worried about that, they're not, it's not even new construction. I would get to it like that.
Because I got written up last time.
But.
Actually, actually, we're not doing a roll call vote to go into a votes session.
Yeah, yeah, do that, but. He says something to you.
No, the office wrote this up. It was one of the findings in the audit.
I would guess we'll be doing Doug's stuff after ten. Yeah, teleconference.
Uh, it won't be. All we have is the basement of the taxes. And his stuff. We might do the two drainage things after. I don't know how much Doug had. Because we still have twenty.
Now we do.
I, yeah, sometimes the dirt, I don't think it's a good time.
How, how's it going?
Good, self?
Not too bad. I'm gonna go get myself a candy bar. Little one-dollar ones.
Ah, my.
Kids do a fundraiser. I'll be right back.
I was getting angry. What do you want to do? Get Doug back up to your person?
Well, let's do the abatement of the taxes.
Yeah, I think that's such a terrible, doesn't it?
That's the.
Oh.
Teleconference.
Yeah.
Let's do the decision on the property that exists. Are you gonna be here for the teleconference?
Twenty o'clock.
Yeah.
Visionary.
Yeah.
Yes, that's me.
That's you?
That is me.
I figured that. Got that done.
Tried to get some goodies out of that, I second he wasn't even there.
No. All right, we're back in session. And our next thing is, uh, decision to abate the taxes on Phillips Street. For the building, emergency management building.
And the property.
And the property across. Rio Road, correct.
There are three separate.
Three separate ones, correct.
So. Is it all? So it's, I'm for, this is full year, three thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. One thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and twelve thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
Does everybody understand about the taxes and the abatement?
Is that abating the taxes to the county or to all the entities? That would receive it, like city, schools, all that.
Peer, everything, so you don't, county's not paying the taxes at all. Uh, because the reason it was brought up is we did not budget for the taxes. So if we, if you do not abate it, we have to add it to the budget ultimately. To pay those taxes for this next year.
I would make a motion to abate all three. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no discussion, do a roll call vote.
Second.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes. Both can carry unanimously. Like the signature.
Yeah.
This though.
I have no reading.
Can't read it, no. I can explain it.
Want me to call Doug up here? One forty-one. I think.
Yeah, the teleconference at ten, right, do you know how much he's got?
Hey Doug. Sorry, I got the wrong one.
Eighty-four.
God, one forty-one, that's the one I did last time. Stuck in my brain. Hey Doug, do you have a whole bunch that, or can we? Okay, good, let's get her done then. Thanks Doug. Because we can't do that until ten anyhow.
Yeah.
Were they gonna call into the line?
That's, I mean.
That's what I thought, but.
I would, I would imagine so.
So who took off with my cheap sheet?
But that's good discipline.
I guess the extent of my setup really depends on. Who shows up, if, if people show up.
Be able to see here, hear your screen through the phone.
Right.
All right.
Hi Doug.
Hi.
Welcome to AT&T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. To join the conference at the host, press star, otherwise, press pound. Please enter your host password, follow pound. There are one participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference at the host. For a menu of available commands, press star, pound.
Sure, thank you. Okay Doug, we are ready.
All right.
No construction in your right away.
Yeah, no, there is no construction in the road right away today. Um, instruction. The Big Six Bridge, we are in right now, working on approaches. Um, yesterday we tore out the east side, refilling that east side with rock, getting ready for paving. And, uh, probably in an hour or so, we'll be moving the machine over to the west side, tearing out the pavement that we need. And hopefully tomorrow, getting that filled in. I'm hoping that the north-south will be open, uh, for Thursday. Possibly tomorrow afternoon and the east-west by Thursday night. And if we can't get it, we're gonna work some overtime Friday and then guardrail on next week. And if we can't get it, we're gonna work some overtime Friday, and then guardrail on next week. That will be completed. Uh, the bridge down at Irvington, they are driving piling on the east side there. They thought by the end of the day, they'll have all that piling driven, then they'll form up footing, and get their stamp, and be, have the east and the west be ready to get, they gotta put out a tee to support their beams, then they'll start working on buttons. We're hoping that they'll get another crew in there soon, so that that will go a little bit faster. Uh, the Fairville Road, that concrete paving, they have the concrete in Cassuth County has been installed, and it is cured. I don't know what the status of any shouldering is there. The concrete is there, the people do have, in Cassuth County have access and can get on the road and drive on it, but it's not open for traffic. A four-way bridge, they had, as of yesterday, about twenty-five sections that have been delivered. They're doing their grading, they got their water rerouted, so that's going. So they should be starting to set some sections this week. Things going well, let's hope we don't get any ready to wash them already. Uh, resurfacing, the cold-in-place recycling is complete on P sixty-six. Uh, hot mix, they're scheduled for September nineteenth. That is what they're telling us when they'll start putting in hot mix. The DOT one sixty-nine bridge, I stopped up there last week. That is supposed to be poured after Labor Day, so in about a week, they figured they'd be pouring. DOT resurfacing, I drove to Clear Lake over the weekend. Everything's milled, it's just a matter now of getting asphalt on there, it appears to me. Uh, Lennyard Wind Power, we had some damaged pavement, the contractor, the owners are aware of it, we made them aware of it. We've got to figure out how we're gonna get that repaired and get back with them. They were propped crane crossings, and at this one location, they did not, something happened, the pavement failed, and we have another area where that identified where there was some damage once the first crane crossed. Uh, we're aware of it, we've told them they gotta put down more pads, they gotta put more support. Just, we're talking with them yesterday. Cassuth Wind Energy, they are continuing to pour concrete for their footings there. They are getting, getting their opponents. I don't know when they're gonna start setting, well, no more, it'll be out after our weekly meeting tomorrow.
Two cranes are up.
They do have two cranes up now?
Over at Hanar Aspen, Jack, or.
Ram.
Rams, Jay Grant, that one's been up for about a week.
Yeah.
And then the one in, uh, Monson's eighty, on Irvington Block Top.
Okay.
They, I went to Wesley, it was down, I came back from Wesley, they stood up.
Yeah.
So they get two separate cranes.
They get the cranes.
Shouldn't take long to put them all up though.
Yeah. Uh, we do have an employee that, uh, we, we are administering a catastrophic leave with. He had some medical issues in June. Um, he has used up all of his paid leave time. He had about forty-eight hours that he needs for, to be through this pay period. We are administering a catastrophic leave, I think we've already donated. But he'll need a couple more for some, uh, type of doctor's appointments. So there is an employee, if you'd like to know more about that. Uh, there is a, a a policy in our handbook on how to use it, and that can give you some specifics, but I don't see. Uh, we sent out letters of termination for all of the ag leases yesterday. So they were dated by the thirty-first. We also included a letter that we are going to be follow-up with negotiations for next year, and with, in the case with Kenny Dahlhauser and Don Hagan, Don Hagan's boy Cory. We told him we've sent in the new ones, but just as a formality, we terminated the leases. Until we get the rest of this, I'll take care of it. Uh, we continue to look for mechanic shop employee, we've got it advertised. The bandwork, Derek talked with, we'll get that on the agenda next week. I did not receive anything until Friday for that, so I just wanted to, I did get it on the agenda, make sure I had the information. And then, um, that's it for county engineer, by the way. I don't know if you guys have any other issues on roads or anything like that?
Hey, a guy called me yesterday, called me back, then he called me back to Smarts, I haven't talked to him yet. He's got a concern about the road behind the fairgrounds. That's city game, that ain't even our road, it's a pretty mighty fairground.
Well, that's a long story. Yeah, I don't know who's, it's not cities, and I can't, we've, we've looked for it. Um, we can't find where it's ever been established, it's a county road. And if they're talking about between Highway one sixty-nine and where Shipley, Lon, is that Lonnie or?
Yeah, Lonnie was there.
That's not a road, that's private.
He just said the gravel road.
So anyway, yeah.
So I gotta, actually I gotta talk.
Yeah, let me know, but that's a long.
Okay.
That's a long story too.
I didn't know whether to tell him it's our cities or a private.
Well, it depends on where you're at.
Okay. I'll get old today. I'll get old today then.
Alright. Um, zoning. I just wanna bring it up, it was talked about, it was sort of. Um, I've read through the Shelby County ordinance. First of all, February fourteenth of two thousand twelve, the board appointed me for, appointed me zoning administrator to allow three months for replacement to be found for Jack Bradley. That's when Jack retired. Anyway, that, I'm still the zoning administrator. Um, Shelby County, that ordinance, as Kyle said, that went through planning and zoning, they reviewed their comprehensive plan. Um, they, they sent it to planning, so it'd be gone through the ordinance. Uh, there were two attorneys present with, uh, Steve Ingle, I think was the board member that was talking for Shelby County. Uh, they actually hired an attorney to do this work for them. And I didn't tell Todd that, so. Uh, so, I think that, I don't believe that you can just say they need to put a, put a distance setback here, setback there. I think that you, uh, better make sure that how it's done is done correctly, in times. Um, the other thing is, if you read this, conditional use permits, um, there's a lot of work for a zoning administrator. A conditional use permit takes an application, takes notification papers, notification to the neighboring landowners, hearings. You know, that's for every parcel in Shelby County. That would have a pipeline going through there. Please just take that into consideration when further discussed that. So, at least if it's involved in that stuff, I get involved in all of it. Planning and zoning board gets involved, and the board of adjustments. We have a volunteer, planning and zoning, initially we had volunteer board of adjustment. When wind came in, we had, we had people resigned because they don't wanna have to put up with all of the debating public. So. When that happens, you look correctly. Also keep in mind all the other stuff, all the other work that was made. That's all, and then also, I think I mentioned it last week, uh, did receive a retirement notice from Larry Hawes, Cassuth Waste Management. So we're starting to look to see what other options are here.
Doug, for zoning, uh, was that a full-time position before?
Well, Jack was sanitarium, zoning administrator.
We could wish to.
Yeah. Okay, so that was combined with those.
Yeah, I mean, those are three that come off of it.
The transfer is gonna bump Dusty up, hire somebody under him or not?
I haven't really decided yet. We're definitely gonna have to get another person while we do all that.
We got to post it for the road workers, or?
Uh, we will, yes.
Yeah.
Um, we do have the mechanic shop as well, that posts it for road workers, and there's a bad.
For the transfer, you gonna hire in-house, or you gonna hire anybody?
Well, the last time we did it, uh, we advertised, and Dustin Hanson actually worked for the road department, and he expressed interest. Very similar to that, I don't see any difference.
Yeah, that was one thing that was discussed, I think, too, was hiring, and that, I don't want, I don't think you can hire in-house solely. I think you have to post it outside as well, as was discussed.
Well, it kind of depends on, I mean, there, there are, I mean, we follow the code. We, we did, we put it in our papers.
But I don't think, I think they said there's no option for just hiring in-house, they all have to be posted publicly.
Yeah. Anyway, that's all for tonight here.
Anything else for Doug? Thank you Doug, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're back, well, yeah, we got three counties calling, or two other counties calling in. Hopefully both. Um, how long do you wanna take on, uh, we gotta let Marge get in here first, so. Through the pay out number two and four.
You need all Mark.
I texted him, he said okay, so she's gonna be out.
I will, three of them after we're done with.
I mean.
Try eighty-four.
Do you guys have any questions on?
No. Tyler Doug.
Questions on?
Yeah, so you have signed.
Signed your name, and it's kinda scribbly, I don't know.
I hope I don't have any questions on them.
It's kinda scribbly, Tyler.
That's how you know it's me. If this, if this is tea.
I can't really read it. Uh, we are sitting here, we're, Marge is coming, we have the board sitting here, three members of the board and the auditor, uh, two farmers and Tyler.
Okay. Alright, this is Emmett County, and we have all five supervisors here. And I will put you on speaker so that we can join in, okay?
You bet, thank you.
Bye.
You bet.
Well, let's just wait until Paula dies in.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Cassuth controlling county.
Thank you. Is that you Kyle?
No, that's Roger. He's sitting way at the end of the bar.
Oh, you're way at the end of the bar, okay. You're up for all day today?
What's that, Tim?
You're up for all day today, Tyler?
Maybe.
Has he ever been?
What's that?
He's never been up for all day.
Oh, no, come on, I'm just, I'm just riding the guy.
That Palo Alto County?
Good morning, this is Palo Alto.
Morning.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Emmett and Palo Alto County, as far as Cassuth County, we have three supervisors. We have Mr. Stecker, and Mr. Casey, and Mr. Jarks, and our auditor, and, uh, Marge, the drainage clerk.
And, uh, our auditor, and two people from media, and three, four other people for other reasons, but they are sitting here.
Okay, thank you. How about Palo Alto?
Palo Alto, we have, uh, four supervisors here. Roger Falstek is absent, and the auditor, Carmen Mosher, and the drainage, uh, clerk, Jordan Maury.
Thank you.
And four for other reasons.
Tyler, how close are you ready?
Thank you.
I'm gonna pass these out here, and.
So, handout. What we're doing, try joint eighty-four completion.
We did a house of paperwork.
It's good. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for try eighty-four?
Don't move.
I have a motion by Mr. Stecker, do I have a second?
Second by Schumacher.
Second by Schumacher?
Right.
All those in favor in Cassuth say aye. Aye. About Palo Alto and Emmett. Is it all ayes?
Yes.
Yep.
It's all ayes. I will declare the teleconference open, and the hearing open, and turn it over to Tyler.
Good morning all, Tyler Conley with Holden and Mink, the engineer that oversaw the project. Uh, here for the
Stay close to them.
Stay close, okay, perfect. Everybody got me? Here for the, uh, completion hearing for the Fila Made Open Ditch Repair Project of Joint Drainage Nistic, number eighty-four. I have, uh, attached front page as a certification of contract completion. The second page is the completion report. This outlines when bids were received, October fifth of last year. The, uh, low bid was to Ritzel Excavating Inc. Uh, for one hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and zero cents. Got the high bid, the engineer's estimate there. Work commenced in March of this year and was substantially complete mid-July. You can see there was one change order for rectification of quantities. They did not use all of the, uh, estimated pipe amount, so there was a decrease in project cost of nine thousand dollars, nine thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. For a total amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars, twenty-six cents, of which all but ten percent has been paid, the retainage. For damages, landowners are eligible for the damage resulting on work on their land. Landowners on whom the work was performed have been notified, and I believe we have a couple in the audience here today. Um, we recommend paying damages even inside the right-of-way for the re-establishment of the, in this case, uh, primarily buffer zone. There was a little bit of corn outlined in the tabulation of damages.
Right-of-way, why have a right-of-way?
Uh, it's, I'm of the opinion that the damages paid on the establishment of the right-of-way, a hundred year right-of-way a hundred years ago is not sufficient for the damage incurred now. The right-of-way allows us to have the work done and allows us to traverse the facility, uh, but in order to better get established, so it doesn't just grow up with weeds and is neglected by the landowners because they're not compensated for the damage that they suffered. It's my recommendation to pay for that, uh, receiving. It's simply my recommendation though, that can certainly be adjusted. The tabulations can be adjusted by the joint trustees. Uh, I believe it's the fourth sheet is the tabulation.
It amounts to twenty-two hundred and eight dollars for the entire project.
Oh, yeah, right, that's about another. What affected by that is, is that some of them have buffer strips and they're not in on it and some of them plant corn right to the ditch?
Uh, there, the majority of this was buffer, which we are still recommending be, uh, paid and reseeded. There was some areas where the banks were very, very steep that the spoil ran out oh-so-slightly into corn to the tune of about a tenth of an acre into corn. So it's, uh, that's what we had for surveyed damage of corn. The rest was buffer.
And the buffers were reseeded by the contractor, is that correct?
The buffers were not, we do not reseed the, the buffers. We have, we leave that to the, uh, to the landowners. If they have a certain mix that they'd like to see or if they are under some sort of contract, we don't get involved with that. Simply recommend the, the payment of damages.
So.
So they have damages to reseed it?
Correct. Essentially, yes. But it's not, it's not a matter of we've already paid the contractor to reseed it and now we're paying the landowners to seed what's already been seeded.
The number one fourteen and two eleven, they both talked about seeding, fertilization, and mulching. Now, what, what part of the project was that?
That was done on the, uh, side slopes inside the top of bank.
It's pretty much the same as well, I guess, huh?
Yeah, it was the three separate construction divisions as it was broken out by the FEMA investigator.
Yeah, so the, so the seed that they're paying for in the project was on the inside of the banks. The seeding, the landowners should be compensated for would be from the toe or top of the bank out away from the ditch.
FEMA's paying for the.
And that's, it's my understanding.
Twenty-two oh eight. Yep.
And it's my understanding correctly if I'm wrong, Kyle, but FEMA also covers the damage, this total project, because this is a small.
Yeah, so they, this is figured, will be figured into the cost for the project, for the non-construction cost. But then this project's a little bit different than the other ones because we did an improved project, which costs our dollar amount, but we are sufficiently under that, so all of this should be covered. So this is also to be reimbursed by.
Well, that's who the, that's how these FEMA small, in quotes, small projects work.
So FEMA should cover eighty percent of it.
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five.
So what we're really talking about is the amount that's gonna be, uh, uh, the eleven thousand, four ninety-two, seventy-three that would be paid out to the contractor then.
It's the retainage and the damages, but yes, Tim.
But that won't change the amount that's paid to the contractor, is that correct?
Correct. The, the retainage is set at that eleven thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Right.
To be, to be paid thirty days after the close of the completion hearing.
I understand.
That also starts the one-year maintenance period for any, uh, failings due to contractor negligence. That is the crop damage and the seeding.
Both.
And that's both.
Absolutely.
Yes, that, that's, that's everything. We do have landowners if we wanted to take.
Yeah, we probably should.
Comment from them.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I have a comment. I, uh, contacted John Cole Morgan and he said he would seed for a hundred fifty dollars an acre. But that still leaves two mowings to go and he gets twenty-three dollars a time mowing. That's gotta be mowed probably twice the third year or once the second year to keep the weed. So the native grass has been done. So he would like to go for instead of a hundred fifty dollars an acre, he would like to try for two hundred. But the first two dollars an acre to cover the mowings, to cover the mowing.
They, they wouldn't.
Yes, I, I will, the, uh, landowner.
You're, he also needs to do a little drainage because you can't put seeding into that hard bank that they're now, you need to work that up a little bit. So somebody's gotta do that too.
The, the original question was that the quote landowners had received for the reseeding of the buffer was a hundred and fifty an acre for reseeding, but the, uh, that would not include the cost for the two mowings to keep weeds down to allow the natural grasses to establish. So the request was to change the, uh, CRP slash buffer damage per acre amount from one fifty to two hundred dollars.
How's that affect the twenty-two hundred dollars?
I don't have, uh, I don't have an answer for exactly what the, I could do the math here. I can try to do the math here quickly and see what that changed to.
Eight acres, eighteen acres, minus fifteen dollars.
Is six, six ninety-seven.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's.
It'd be an additional seven hundred dollars in.
Minus the ten to the acre quantity doesn't change.
We seed some grass, isn't that about a price?
Oh.
I, I am a little bit surprised your quote was that high to the range here.
That's receiving.
Yeah. But seed prices have gone up way ahead and all that.
Well, they seem to be coming up each thing. He's a pretty good man, uh, with his last season. He's a great man and he does a good job.
He's a good person.
Yeah, he's a good person.
No, we talked on.
You guys can get to it cheaper.
The, the discussion in the room now is the surprise of how high the quote was for seeding for those that are unable to hear.
When we talked on, um, pack one with Stires about flying it on the plane, do you remember what that broke down to?
I don't.
That was the. Twenty grand or whatever for that thing.
Twenty-nine.
You never did it. Didn't?
Not tonight.
Just make a motion to pay the contractor, pay the damages.
Well, we'll.
Are there any other landowners that, that wanna make a claim on this?
No, not.
That's, that's all we have here and that's, I don't think.
I, I would, I would say, and I'm just gonna speak, I hope he'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I would say a consensus, consensus here in Emmett is that, uh, you know, since he came in ninety-four hundred dollars under, we're talking about, about a three thousand dollar bill. It's probably, uh, it's probably all right to just go ahead and do it.
Well, we're close to public hearing and then we'll vote on, uh.
Yeah, but I think that's the general idea. I think we should probably just.
I, I think when you, uh, make your motions for. That's when you know the changes you'd like to see.
Right.
So, yes, I, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we do do it in the public hearing. So.
I think Palo Alto's okay to, to just go ahead and pay it.
Okay, let, let's close.
It's a FEMA, it's a FEMA thing anyhow.
Yeah, let's close the public hearing and then we'll have a motion to that effect.
That would be. Stecker, Stecker would move to close public hearing.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Schumacher again.
Schumacher?
Maybe he can bring that in.
Good.
Do I need the next one too?
All, all those in favor in Casoots say aye. Aye.
I don't think they have to vote call it?
Yeah, we're supposed to. Whoa, 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 pal Stecker, Casey.
Yes, yes.
Jarks, they're all ayes.
Jeff is aye. All ayes in Emmett.
Yes, sir.
And they're all ayes in Palo Alto.
Good.
I would definitely offer to make a motion to the CRP buffer payment to two hundred dollars an acre and accept the, uh, completion report and pay the retainage.
Pay the retainage to the contractor?
In thirty days.
You got that? Mr. Stecker's motion was to pay the retainage and to change the seeding rate to two hundred dollars an acre. Do I have a second? Okay.
Don't move through.
Don't ask me how it's spelled.
B-L-U-T-H.
Is it? Is there any discussion on the motion? Do we have? Hearing none. Uh, those in favor in Casoots say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Any other discussion on? Try eighty-four or any comments on the project?
I, I am in vices. It got done. It turned out pretty well.
Yeah, it looked good.
I, uh, I was just out there this morning. There's all but about one, there's one really sandy spot where it's having trouble catching the rugs. But other than that, the whole thing. We weren't able to get all the bends up. Got a lot of rock in it, everything else. You stay on the bridge, look downstream. Oh, yeah, yeah. Hard, hard to find evolving rights.
You guys got any comment on the project, Palo Alto or Emmett?
I think we got it.
All right, all times. Okay.
It's just that our motion was last after adjourn.
We don't really need it. We can all just adjourn at each county.
Cause we.
All right, let's do it.
We, we got a few other things to settle yet. Yep, no, nothing for try eighty-four.
Yeah, okay. We got some other business.
We do too.
Yeah, uh, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, now granted it's much, much shorter than, than.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty small.
Right. But no, it, uh, yeah, I, I was out there this morning looking.
Maybe.
Why did we do? I have just a question.
We don't need to un-see them.
Do we need roll call for the opening too?
We should have.
But we didn't.
No. We should have. Herman's right, you should have roll call vote. I don't know, it's more important to close a hearing or roll call vote than open it.
Probably both.
Yeah, but we should have done the other. But Tri-County hearings are hard at best.
Trying to get down any people in, uh, even on phone call.
Yep.
Uh, were there any questions for me on the, uh, I heard you saying about pay-up pensions?
Yeah, those next, that's our last thing.
We have a, uh, pay out number two on DD four, lateral twenty-eight. And, uh, in our folder, you have anything on there, Tyler, other than?
Uh, I can, I can comment on the project. Uh, they've been moving along best they can for, uh, pipe supply. Uh, they're having a hell of a time getting, getting pipe. Uh, but that's, that's kinda kept them a little slow doing everything great. They've been, uh, right around about three hundreds on grade every, every day we check, so.
Brian, I talked to him the other day. He farms, Kayla's farm. And they told him that, well, we can't get pipe. He says, why don't you come out and look in the field? It's laying all over hell. It's on the beans. The pipe's been there for how many months? Oh, we didn't know that. Uh, there's a bunch of pipes along the ditch and then along the creek and then that earlier they were blowing across the bean field.
That, well, that's, that's all the, that's, that's not, that's not.
That's not the. Thirty-eight is, um, thirty-six inch concrete. There's not anything out there.
Oh, but I know they're talking about, uh, tin whistles and they said that I had a hard time getting them to, like they told Brian.
Uh, it's a couple of months ago.
Well, I just talked to Brian two weeks, a week ago.
Right.
True. The guy you were close contact a long time ago.
You talked to him and he said what?
That somebody contacted them and they had still got the pipes and because they were short of pipe. He said it's laying out in the field.
Pretty sure all that's installed has been for about a week or two. So maybe yes.
I'll look into that one. I'll look into that one.
I'm pretty sure they're long past.
As far as lack twenty-eight, the, the concrete pipe is what they're having difficulties.
They make another.
Uh, the report to me is that they are short-staffed making it and they are short-staffed truckers to get it where it needs to go.
Brian Yimmel had a bunch behind his faucet that he sold. And I guess Rice pulled in the other day, loaded all that up so he bought something.
Yeah, it's, for, uh, Brian Longing with Holland, that was the, he's the foreman on the.
The color player someone. Oh, I mean, I'm just British player.
That might, I believe is white, blue letters, but I think he was getting it. Not sure.
It wrote, his bulldozer disappeared and it was like, it soared from the distance and I could see player rode on it. Cause he bought the timing machine.
Get back to business, man.
So.
Okay.
Wait, it's not really, I, I saw.
We have a pay app in front of us for.
I'd make a motion to, but pay app for lateral twenty-eight.
Hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents?
Yeah.
Is there any questions? Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Or on the? Or on the payout? Tyler, you got any comments other than that work is done and it's fine with you? All those in favor of paying? Payout number two? Aye. Unanimous. Next, we have payout four for DD four FEMA repair project. We can't pay it. You have the first one, no?
We this one, so Paige sent out that she will send it to them, um McCarty.
Holland, you have Holland sign.
Right, yes.
You got those, okay, good, we can sign those.
Yeah, if we don't approve it today, we we should approve it today so that we can pay it next week for the first of monthly claims.
But we can't, they have their copies haven't returned, so.
We can't.
They are shipping receipt, I think Paige told me they received it either, I think she said last Monday they got it, so. It's they they have ample time to turn it around. I I think they just miss a, I think they just miss a payment of this.
Let let the record show that they will have to read.
Well, we just we just have to wait for it to arrive, yeah.
Wait for their paperwork to come?
But in in regards to the pipes being installed for for um Vantra, so they are long ways out there and. GPS coordinate on the map was put in August fifth, that the pipes were installed in the section you were talking about, so that's almost a month ago.
Yeah.
Which is on our collector, we all have access to.
All the two?
So.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
I think that's all for me.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
That's all. Do you have additional question for me?
Uh, we said we could supply the damage if we have to do that. Are we just gonna do that?
If that you extend the check. Maybe I should just.
They have to be, if they have to be changes, but if you agree with what they have, we don't have to do any.
I I will need that updated.
Yeah.
Send the updated tabulation for the.
Yeah, and then I'll pay that and I'll send that with.
Great, thank you, thanks all.
Do we have to sign some papers or something to get that?
No, if you agree with what they.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, for both of them.
Okay.
We agreed on it, so. We'll all get second checks and then we'll just combine it. Good job. Very good, okay, thanks for your time.
Have a good one.
Thanks for money, yeah, thanks, thank you.
Mr. Stecker, do you have any reports?
Um ISA was the last week, a lot of good stuff, uh a discussion about pipeline, talked about that or anything. There, which Roger reserved a conversation with Ricky, with uh Rick Fowler, when you were all great, well, we had great times of dealing, but there was another piece of the conversation that was discussed about wetness factors and limiting their this their construction to when it's dry based on specific numbers, measurable data, all that sort of stuff, that's that's something we could potentially work into in ordinance, uh but there was a lot of good things down there, now, so could you guys have any questions or what?
The lateral we thought earlier about timeframe too, certain times of the day, they can't work like after six, seven at night because that's when stuff happens.
Oh, or.
People watch some insurance or things like that.
Inspector timeframe.
Yep.
Anything else, Tom?
Unless you guys have questions for me.
Mr. Casey.
Plus two days, we don't want to look at that bitch that's, I don't know what Doug decided, he's checking into it. I checked that and I've been on the phones, several people about stuff about the wind, otherwise a lot of people about the pipe. Landlord's concerned because he was on that list. I said a lot of people just called me about that, and I got that guy called me about that road, I could have I called him back, but he didn't answer last night, so. I know, but whose road is it? Yeah, whose road is it? Well, the six Tammy Drew.
Yeah.
Other than that, uh all I got.
But that road I looked on our collector, it doesn't have anyone's property there until you get by one sixty-nine. Like it's in Kasuth County, uh say, or I don't know if it was a fair or agricultural.
Well, that's one that goes to the old Culligan.
But then when it goes back through there, it's open like the right away for all your city streets, county roads, so. Um the east end has Kasuth County Agricultural Society. So, um the rest of that, once it gets past that building.
The Culligan building?
Yeah, once it gets past that and goes back through the park, that's all open like right away. So I would say it's either city or county, but I don't know.
It might be neither. Right, property. We sat through the EMS meeting and just stayed in. See other computer technology.
The cyber security.
Cyber security, yeah. That was interesting, the EMS, yeah, it was it was interesting, but.
Because it's coming right before the election. Security for everything, but it.
We're doing everything that they recommended. We have insurance and I didn't know we had that much insurance on our for cybersecurity.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, so when we were in the conference, I emailed her name Bridgette and asked her about what we have covered, so I think we do have cybersecurity insurance, so if we get attacked or something would happen, we are covered.
Well, that cover, if you got like ransom, you gotta pay a million bucks.
She, well, she said exactly.
We don't have that much.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a huge amount. I see what that covers, I can tell you.
You got anything else, Mike?
Minnesota has reached out for that dream forty-one in Minnesota, they want to improve that tile. That we wanted them to from dream one twenty-nine on Hartley.
Yep.
So, um they wanted to, and I didn't know uh they would need, Kathleen Middle, they suggested being part of a meeting there to discuss improving that tile.
Which is good on the phone.
Uh, it's complicated.
Yeah.
It's one where they got a hump over the top of the tile, that's so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, wouldn't do that over the phone, do you want a day meeting or night meeting?
That's it, they really, they're willing to.
I was gonna talk to you about that after, yeah, because I saw your email.
Yeah, we can. We'll work with them any way we can because it'd be nice to get that done because the farmers up there want it.
Yeah.
I mean, I would even say we could, if we could do farther north, that'd be better to get closer to the district, even Makota.
Well, right. Need to vote, can we beat out on the road out home?
Word, yeah, I mean.
A discussion, I don't know that a decision needs to be made, but it's a discussion, so I don't know who may need, they need. That's my question, I don't know. How many do you need to go to the meeting board?
Yeah, I don't think every, we we aren't that far yet, the whole board has to go is my point, so if we just have somebody from us and somebody from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Out on the road, I think that's really what we need to do.
Okay.
Yeah, because I've because I've talked to the board a couple of times about it.
Okay.
Let's see if we can work some out.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Marge.
Thanks.
Thank you. And so Bridgette's Bridgette's email said, uh cyber liability coverage is automatic. The coverage is for instances when the member is held allegedly liable for a loss, it's low exposure, this is not the coverage that is needed to most of the cyber claims. Cyber breach is to expense two hundred and fifty thousand per occurrence and two hundred and fifty thousand aggregate per year. This is automatic for all ICAP members, this is the exposure that everyone is worried about and the one that you see the claims on. Optional million dollar limits are available for quote at the anniversary only with ICAP. I previously provided the necessary application for this to Derek, but I haven't received back, so right now all we have is the two hundred and fifty thousand, which really isn't. So I did just email her and ask her to send me what the other options are and an application, and if you want, I can show it to you at the next meeting. To see what what those are, so we do have two hundred and fifty thousand.
But it's gonna get more expensive.
Yeah, which, but if you have one of those attacks where you have ransom, it's gonna be a lot more. Just just a thought, I they recommended at the conference that we all are covered, just in case the.
Did they recommend a dollar amount? Because I would, I mean, that'd probably break into some of our equipment, paying at our backups and stuff, because we're not gonna pay a million dollar ransom if we can buy a fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment and replace it or whatever, if we're covered, it's not gonna be that kind of issue anyway.
You're supposed to have everything backed up every day.
Yeah, that's that's where I'm thinking our our equipment is probably enough of an insurance, but we can talk about that for sure.
Yeah, yeah, we could review that. We should review the insurance yearly anyhow. EMS, it was kind of interesting. Where they have EMRs, we got nine hundred and fifty-one in the state, EMTs, we got six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight. And the paramedics, we got three thousand, one hundred and fifty-six, critical care, seven hundred and fifty-three, but they aren't all out on ambulance duty. And uh there's four thousand, seven hundred, or forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve RMs. Which and they talk about getting people to be EMTs and paramedics and how to enhance it, start in the high schools was his thing, and then I told him, well, then you just stop them, and when they go to the big city, then you get them, have to retrain them. And uh I did tell him that as far as an EMR and an EMT, it's same training, only the EMR start stops quicker, why don't you just have it so that they sign up to be an EMT? And if they go through the training and they get to the EMR point and they want to quit, that they can quit, and then those hours are good. As of now, if they go to the EMT training and they quit, they have to go back and take the EMR training all over again. Which don't make much sense. So. And other than having the vote pass and putting the burden on the taxpayers, they didn't have one good idea.
Thank you. I got a thank you from the Liburn Library for the allocation for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, you want to say it?
Um right now, we're doing election training yesterday and tomorrow for the special election on the thirteenth. Um so we have two sessions yesterday, two sessions tomorrow, we're open until five uh tomorrow and Friday because of the special election, so we're working late with those nights because it's Labor Day weekend, I told my staff, they are not required to stay till five, I I don't expect them to have to stay, like we probably won't have anybody right now, I think we only have seven absentee requests for the specials, so I think we we haven't had a lot of interaction for the special, and I don't anticipate it to get much time, so um then, let's see, we're, you brought up a good question when we are talking about cybersecurity. Um one of the things that we have to do before the auditors come is get ready for inventory, last year we had the issue with inventory because we weren't done. Auditors were here, the they were behind, so this year we've set up a plan so that the inventory gets updated every month. And then we just sent out, Brittany just sent out inventory list to each department for them to update their inventory and get back to her, she's been working on that. Um but one of the questions that was raised during the inventory process is, um anything that's over I can't remember, it's two fifty or five hundred, we have to claim on our inventory. Unless it's, our policy has always been unless it's computer equipment, like monitors and keyboards, all that we've kept in inventory listed, even though it might be under that threshold. Um and the reason that that we've done that, I if I understand correctly, is so that if there's a fire or something, we lose our monitors and keyboards, we still have that claimed on our insurance and can get still and get, you know, claim that, claim of something that happened. Eric has some concerns, he does not want to have to keep track of all of that because it's too much. Um I told him that it should be up to each department to keep track of their monitors, our keyboards, all that stuff, so we have. So, um that has been what what I have said, is even if it's under that threshold, I still want all computer equipment instead, no, not all cords, not all, you know, not all that stuff. But if it's a monitor or keyboard or something, I think it's important so that the insurance company knows what we have. Um because it's it'd be harder to track and reimburse us if they don't know. Dardner and Company is getting ready to come and start our our audits, so I have a an agreement here that Roger and I have to sign telling what their duties are and what our duties are, we get it every year. Roger and I sign it and we keep one copy and we send it to Dr.
I think that has to be by the, does, haven't you done that before?
This isn't a that contract, this is just their their um services that they provide, so I don't think so. I don't think we've had it approved because it's not their contractor for payment, it's just.
I feel like we've had it on the agenda before for that same stuff, though.
I can look and see at last year's.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the funny part is this this letter is dated June eight, I don't know why it's dated June eight. It's, I just got it in. I don't know, but I will look and see if that's something that has to be.
Because would that have been about the same timeframe? Every year?
That we get. Yeah, I have last year's in, but I'll just have to look and see. Yeah, it just has, it doesn't. Yeah, it just has, it doesn't. Just says. Well, her note, she put a note with it and it didn't say anything about. Says, these are the engagement letters for this year's spot. And I need you and the board supervisor chair to sign both copies. Send, please send me one of the copies and you post that, the other copies for you. But I'll look and make sure before we send it. Make sure that you don't have to approve it. Um, the segregation of duties policy that you guys approved today, I have to forward to the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management because they are the ones requesting the letter and it has to be submitted to them by September ninth, so I will submit to them that today and hopefully that's all they need. That would cover that. So, and then I will email, I have scanned today and I will email it to help. And Alex, next week.
Not much.
Do you have much next? So it's already September next week.
Yeah, don't forget Thursday.
Thursday.
Wellness.
Draw blood.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Draw blood. Oh, ARP meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, I, I just remembered that.
And we have several requests that have come in.
When's that?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Cause Scott Show, she's gonna be here from the Fair Board. And then we have a few other things that have come in. So we will have some things to talk about to get to. I don't have any.
Don't we have, don't we have all that pretty much spent, though?
We still have a hundred thousand.
Well.
I thought that seventy thousand from Algonha for to save Algonha would have taken that down, so. Or even with that in, we still have a hundred thousand. But other than the health, it's earmarked.
We don't necessarily have it all spent for the EMS building.
Well, we only have, but that's included in that because I, even though it's not, I included the whole amount of the resolution. So even though it hasn't been spent yet, it's marked off, so, so that's included. There's only twenty seven thousand left in them, so we're getting help somehow. But, um, yeah, after the seventy thousand, and now I have to make sure my worksheet that that's calculating currently, but yeah, even after the seventy thousand, there's still a hundred in there, but two hundred some thousand is for ambulance. If that doesn't pass, if the EMS resolution doesn't pass, let me, then we'll have that extra, cause that's earmarked for that, so that's we'll have that extra. And then there's forty four thousand that we've taken out for Trump or Chrisa. I don't know.
I think Chris is gonna spend another time.
That's twenty two thousand eleven.
Yeah. I thought she's could be pretty well done.
Yeah, we haven't even bought the generator yet. That was. Forty.
Yeah.
One of the things I just put down is sixteen thousand. Yeah, if she hasn't brought the generator.
And speaking of that, building and the generator and everything, um. I don't remember someone, when someone mentioned it to me, but the activity complex or whatever in Burt was designated as our oh, it's a disaster shelter or whatever. For the term for it and I thought I had heard they had just bought a big generator for that, so were they even contacted when we bought this building? And changed the location down here?
I didn't know. It was over there.
I didn't know.
It might have been Chrissy that said that. Someone, someone from Burt mentioned that.
That that was a, that was a county?
It, it was designated as our county spot or whatever for disaster or something. I don't remember the name for it. It's been a little bit, but.
I don't know.
That's something that's been like there for like a hundred years.
Well, it's probably been there for a while, I would imagine, but.
So which, the old school?
So, probably when that got switched over. I don't remember when they, that happened.
Well, their town took that over.
Yeah, what's that been? Ten, twenty years?
At the time, they had gun shows in it for
Yeah, it's been a while.
Twenty years.
Yeah, so probably about that time.
Um, let's find out.
Your birthdays, they still put up too. You go there and you.
That's where we have reflections.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, go home and set some ghosts and build some rafters over. Pretty built. Front of the house, sixteen feet out, twenty two foot wide. I'll say big enough.
Too many kids.
Your, your kids are leaving.
Just the right amount.
After next year. Okay, mine graduate this year. Kate's graduate next year. We don't have any.
And so you're making it bigger so that you can get lost?
No, I'm tired when you walk out the front door, how the roof angles are. All the water, snow runs off it. And then we have solid.
I feel like in the meeting, so. Were you bad? Same year, another, another day.
Another day in paradise.
I'll see you this afternoon at the party. Mike Sankey's retirement party is this afternoon.
Oh.
From three to five.
I don't think he'll, I already doesn't wanna go.
He doesn't wanna go. No, he does not wanna retire, but it's mandatory. You cannot be a deputy after your sixty minute. Through, before your six, before you turn sixty six, you have to be dead.
Right.
And he is not.
Ready? Well, he hasn't got my announcement.
That's it, yeah.
Well, that's during the meeting. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Take a jack back finally, huh?
The week's just been big.
No, next week. This is the second week.
This is. He's gone last week.